So I am now going to call along Housing Authority Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Order. Let's have a roll call, please. Chair. Joan Peck.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Commissioner Vidal Gutierrez. Commissioner Martin.
Commissioner Tom Mars.
Commissioner Yawwah.
Interim Executive Director Harold Rodriguez.
Regional Manager Lisa Galanar.
County Supervisor Jennifer Daniels.
Sarah E. Pope-Safety.
Molly O'Donnell.
Oh.
There you go.
Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director.
Tracy D. Francisco, Housing Compliance Engineer.
Great, thank you. We now have the review and approval of the minutes.
Are you behind us?
Oh.
Tim Wong, Assistant Attorney. Eugene May, Assistant Attorney.
I will add that, um, Tim, I think we said this before, if we didn't. Um, we've blended the attorney position for the housing board and Tim is filling out. So he shifted in for it.
Congratulations.
So he's LHA in-house.
In-city, in-house for affordable housing.
So he's LHA in-house.
Yeah.
Do I have an motion for the approval of January 31st? So move. It's being moved by Commissioners Martin, sent by the Commissioner Lawrence. Is there any discussion on this? All those in papers, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No abstain, because I was not presented that.
So that passes with one abstention by Commissioner Lawrence. We are the public committee, we heard questions, anybody in the public that would like to speak? Yes, you are three minutes, and what did you need?
My name is, should I stand up? My name is Huck Quoc. Um, I live at 1272 Long Beach Avenue, and I've talked to many of the commissioners about this topic, but, back in January 2021, the UCD Council passed a ban on using ADUs as short-term rentals. But I, uh, it is still allowed to have a short-term rental in a single-family home. So I could, for example, take my rental that has a family of three living in it, and I can take them out and turn that into a short-term rental. However, I cannot carve out a space in my own home or in my backyard to build an ADU and run that as a short-term rental. I'm just trying to understand why the former is okay and the latter is not okay. Especially when I feel like ADUs are the perfect place for short-term rentals. You might not like short-term rentals, but we do want to have out-of-town people come in to Longmont. Some of those people prefer short-term rentals over hotels. And ADUs are perfect because the homeowner is onsite, can manage that, make sure that the guests are, being good guests and good neighbors, parking where they can be, putting trash where they can be, and that sort of thing. So, again, my, my main question is why are short-term rentals allowed in single-family homes and taking up these larger spaces that families can live in while you can't use an ADU as a short-term rental? Especially when some people rely on that for affordability of their home, when they're on fixed income, they need that extra income. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And this might be, um, if you could present this ahead of my heated session, it's public committee, we heard. That might be better, because this is just Longmont House.
Right, and I, I have done that.
Okay.
I can share you my three minutes that I did that as well.
Thank you.
I figured it would be useful for the housing situation. I figure the shortage of housing is getting used up in, um...
Thank you. So, um, going back, I skipped agenda revisions and submissions, adoptments. Do we have any, uh, I don't see any agenda revisions, but do any of the commissioners have any submission or documents? Just to want to, um...
This staff has a recommendation, that's okay.
Great, yes.
Um, the property tax exemption partnership policy in your hard copy packets that you have here, you have a version with a red line on it. Some late changes came in based on some attorney suggestions that came in this morning. So there is a red line version in your packet as well, and that's what we would like to discuss for item 5A.
Oh, it's the right two. Item 5A, which is... Are you going to do that? It's not on the online, right?
Yeah.
It's under a...
Oh, it's under a gender revision?
Okay.
So I'm going to be presenting on this tonight, Molly O'Donnell, Housing Director. The existing property tax exemption partnership policy was put into place a, a year ago, February 2022. This was something that was put into place ahead of the anticipated development projects that were most active in 2022, Chrisman Two being the, the heaviest loan. We wanted to make sure that we had a policy in place for calculating the partnership fee that would be required. And what we have since learned through research and experience going through developments in the last year is that, that our property tax exemption partnership policy should really be expanded to be more all-encompassing of everything that goes into that partnership. So, um, in order for the Housing Authority to become, to, to enter into that partnership, we have to enter the ownership structure as a special limited partner. So we wanted to make sure that this was clear, that that was the mechanism to become that partner and allow those private developments that are affordable housing, but not sponsored by the Housing Authority, to benefit from tax, property tax exemptions. So we wanted to make sure that was clear. We also have been hit up in the last year by several developers of new buildings, new affordable housing units, and some existing affordable housing providers asking about our property tax exemption partnership policy and how they could gain access to it. It really is, these types of policies are something that are very common in housing authorities. And it's really a very attractive, um, attractive carrot for developers that are, that are looking around at communities and where they want to build affordable housing. And this is one of the things they really rely on to make performance work and make the financing work. And, um, so they're all very interested in what, what the fees look like and how the structures would come together and that type of thing. So in hearing some of their arguments for what they would like, we really thought that clarifying our policy and how we're going to evaluate those projects was important and confirm, well, confirm and be more detailed about our fees and how we collect them, how we calculate them, um, based on the value of the, the benefit to the community that that project brings. And, um, for those that are already on the tax rolls and have not benefited from this policy but are providing affordable housing, they're looking for ways to benefit from property tax exemption. As we wanted to build in a way for that to be considered, but also weigh it against the pros and cons of losing tax revenue in the community for the benefit of that affordable housing development. So what you find here is a much more robust policy than was adopted in 2022. It really does design, uh, describe the application process, our evaluation process, clarifies things about the fees, clarifies how the special limited partnership comes together and what we expect in return. And we also put on here some ongoing management fees, because there is some compliance that staff would have to do to make sure that they're upholding the commitments that are made for these partnerships. So the red line that you see in your packet, this is really what first came in most recently. Now, there's two major ones. First of all, for those existing projects that I was talking about, we really wanted to make sure that we left this a little bit more open to negotiation, because those are going to be really special circumstances. And we need to carefully weigh the benefits to the community from removing something from the tax roll that's already there. And evaluate their, their purpose for wanting the property tax exemption, because the intent is not to allow just an extra profit on the property. It's really in, in exchange for a benefit. So there's one piece there is just talking about for those existing projects, making sure to have negotiation tools. And then the second one is under the partnership terms, when we are considering the, the special limited partnership and what we expect in return. We expected an option for a first right of refusal, but our, the special counsel that we had helping us with this told us, advised us not to get too prescribed there and to leave it open to negotiations, because every property has a different setup and organization, and we don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into something that we can't change. So it was just, we still expect a right of first refusal to make sure that the housing is still part of our affordable stock if they have the opportunity to, to take it over or negotiate how that works in terms of what the payment fee, et cetera.
Yeah, to give you a theoretical example of this one, we'd never thought this was going to happen, but let's say that there's, and we talked about this with the advisory board, so let's say there's a 200-unit multi-family complex that under their existing structure, they're an tax credit project, some project, and they're providing a significant portion of affordable housing. But because they didn't go through this process, they don't have a tax exemption, which means they're currently paying property tax. And they come and say, "Well, because we're meeting these thresholds, we want the ability to pay this property tax exemption." We all have the ability as a housing authority to enter into a special limited partnership to give them a property tax waiver. So let's say theoretically, we're paying $2 million in property tax. The Housing Authority could engage into a negotiation of it. Let's say we want a first right of refusal, and you're, you know, it's a, let's say it's a 15-year compliance period. We want a first right of refusal, then the 15-year compliance period comes up. We want a, I'm not a preference, but we want you to contact us when there are openings for voucher holders potentially, so that we can direct our voucher holders in there. And let's say we want a billion dollars annually to be paid to the Housing Authority for, um, the luxury of, I don't know, just make you skip around this, uh, for the luxury of this property tax. Well, that would take potentially $2 million off the property tax, where we'll shift a billion dollars into the general operating fund of the Housing Authority, which then allows you to, A, deal with the financial issues that we have, B, leverage that million dollars against the Affordable Housing Fund for the construction of other projects, so that we can increase, so we can handle some of these affordable housing needs. And so it's a mechanism that's available to the Housing Authority, where you can enter into these special limited partners. And Ben Doyle is the one that provided this information, but not gets so rigid that you don't have room to negotiate, because, um, every one of these have, will present its own given circumstances that you have to look at.
Thank you. Can you put other conditions on that benefit, um, the city and the public? So for example, could you, um, make them put solar panels and a battery in their complex and allow city communication services to be provided?
I don't know if we could, because we're doing this as the Housing Authority. I mean, we can look at it. I think the key piece for them is they're going to be looking at the margins and going, does this make sense financially for us or not?
Well, that's a question that we, you know, in, in lieu of part of that million dollars that they were going to put in the housing fund. Because there are other value propositions that policy-wise we have to deal with. Commissioner Lawrence?
Just so I'm clear, the, we would, the Housing Authority would have the option, basically, to take property off the, off the rolls for whatever, whatever, for this unit or this combination of units.
Because it owns it's affordable housing and everything.
So, um, there's a, isn't there, Tim, I guess maybe this is a question for you. In the, in the statutes that, that, um, establish the basis for creating special districts, there are, for, there are some reasons, and I, it may vary based on statute 32 and 34, I, I'm not posting up to that, where, where there are some exemptions that can be allowed, right? If there's a district created, going to be a new property tax, property owner can go to, I think, to county commissioners to have their property taken off the rolls. And in other, for, for some reasons, and for other reasons, they cannot. Does, does that make sense to you, or you tracked that up?
I'm back from that, I think.
So how would that, how would that work in this case? I think, I, I think that's an accurate statement, that there are some, not only, the only reason I know this is we've been so deeply into this conversation with this old childhood issue, right? And, um, looking at the statute, I don't know if it's statute 32, uh, C.R. is 32 or 34, but, but it's, it, it lays out the, the reasons and stipulates for this one, you cannot get an exemption, others you can.
Different statute, totally different statute that we operate under. And it's pretty basic, I don't know if you've called it up.
Yeah, I did. It, it's pretty basic. I believe it, I don't think it's because you can build it off the tax rule. I think it, it makes you exempt from taxation requirements, you have that, and it's in proportion to be built up.
So that's the special limited partnership, because we become part of, and frankly, we did it on Chrisman Two. I don't know if we did it on Chrisman Log. That was pre-us. We'll do it, obviously, on Xenia. We'll do it on...
For Xenia.
So any one you do, you have to do that, because otherwise your capital stack gets out. This is a new piece that sort of fell in our lap, where we were like, oh.
Let me ask a couple more questions. This would be a terrific opportunity for us and for, for partners. Has there been any discussion with the school district or others who, who will be affected by this?
Um, not yet, no.
Are we premature, or is that going to matter? Or is it so insignificant in terms of their, their total revenue stream?
I think, A, um, it'll depend on the project. So we don't, every, every project's going to have its own basis, for lack of a better word. And so I think what we would do is, as you see these come forward, you would do the evaluation and to understand what's lost, and what's lost and to whom.
Yeah.
And then before we would bring something to you all to look at specifically, we would engage in those conversations. But I think it's hard to generalize this, because they all have their own financial characteristics.
And just to clarify, this is not new. This has been going on through the Housing Authority. This is just really cementing a policy, and this is very common across all kinds of authorities in Colorado.
Eugene asked a question, if I could use him. He goes, "Well, do we even know about this?" And the answer was, as a city who receives property tax, we had no clue who was getting this exemption when we were not part of the Housing Authority. Because the Housing Authorities can engage in those relationships, and then the special limited partnership just hits the tax laws. And so we have problems here that agreements were made when they were constructed. What was the...
We have a whole list.
Yeah, we have a whole list of them.
That we, that the Housing Authority received fees for at, at one point in time, not ongoing, but at one point in time, fees. We have all that fee structure.
The only difference was the fees are now much higher, and are building ongoing. And when something presents itself, it's currently paying, it gives us negotiating to, to look at these components. And then each project's going to present its own financial issues. And we'll give you an example, we talked about some development challenges we're running into, and one of them now, and so...
So my question is, um, I'm a little bit nervous about having a property tax exemption on partnerships that are outside of the LHA, a law, um, if it...
These would all be, and we would, the LHA would be a, in order to get it, you'd have to be a special limited partner. So you would be in the ownership structure.
And we built in what we could here regarding maintaining the health and safety of the property, ensuring their compliance issues, just making sure that if LHA is assigning their name and ownership to it, that it is withholding LHA values and serving their commitment.
So would the development be entering to our IZO of 12% or would the whole development have to be affordable?
Uh, it can be, so this can be applied on a percentage basis. It is based on, in statute, the percent of your units that are affordable, that's the amount of property tax exemption you're eligible for on a percentage basis.
And it would all be significantly over 12%. I mean, if they're only building what you're required, that we're not, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah, these are typically li-tex.
Projects.
Project that are all under 60%, whether they're deed restricted or not because of our IH, the city's IH policy sounds different, but that wouldn't, this, wouldn't expect this to apply to somebody who's building just their 12% IH on-site units.
Okay, so the property tax exemption would be only for the percentage of, for the...
For the...
Upstream. That basis. My other question was going to be, since this was up here. Would we be giving other exemptions or tax incentive, um, billing incentives to the developer on top of the property tax exemption?
As the city, that would be an option through...
Planning.
No, that would be through our housing process, where we would look at that. That would depend, so it's two different questions. So we do that now.
Right.
Um, so when we bring an affordable housing project, so there's the tax exemption before they're built, and then there's a tax exemption after they're built. So you've got to split these two apart. So when we bring a project to you all, and we're trying to manage the, the gap in the finance, because every one of these has its own gap. And we'll, to, to give you just a, a hint of what we're going to go over, and so like the one I pulled over, there's a $4 million gap. So the way you cover the gap is you start looking at everything we have in our arsenal to shrink that $4 million gap down. And so they would get both, because you need it on the operational side, on the ongoing dollars. That's for those that are planned to be built. Those that are built that are asking for it is a completely different equation, and that's one where you tend to look to pour more money out of it so that you can maximize, A, we can cover a $600,000 ongoing operating gap that we have, and leveraging some dollars for another construction.
And how long then would the tax exemption last on the LHA portion?
As long as we are on, the LHA is on the ownership structure. So typically, let's say you go through, if it's a li-tex project, you go through a 15-year compliance period, and then if, um, you are re-syndicating or the investor wants to exit, then if that ownership structure changes, then, then that, then your exemption goes. If we go, the exemption goes. And it's built right now, based on 15 years in terms of our fee calculator.
And if you have a first right of refusal associated with this, and then they want to sell, we may come in and go, "We want to buy." And then, then it's in perpetuity, because we own it. And it's, it's really how do you maximize the unit's profitability.
Okay, Commissioner Lawrence? Thank you. Just to clarify for myself, because a lot of the examples that people have been talking about have been for new development, but Harold, I think the first thing, sorry, it's in your room.
Here, it's fine.
The first example we gave was for, uh, a, an existing property that had a lot of low-income residents, a lot of vouchers for residents already. And so they could do this to re-syndicate essentially, or, or syndicate.
No, not even re-syndicate, yeah. Let's say a project, I mean...
They want, they want to, they want to, um, they want to fix themselves. They want to upgrade, they want to do something, they need to pull some operating money out. And, but that's, that, even though we had a lot of examples about new development, that's, that's still a big part of the example. So, you know, it could be, it could be plover mason apartments, for example, and that would work.
Yeah, so let's say you had a unit that was tax-credit, that was funded via tax credits, that...
What if it wasn't? I mean, what if it, what if it was private property and it wanted to enter the one of these, because it's close to compliance or because it would be compliant if it were in the...
That's where you need the flexibility to have that conversation. But I think where you will see this happen is a project, is a project that has received tax credit funding. But for whatever reason, the policy that the Housing Authority had at the time, they weren't going to qualify on looking to Molly, because they may have been, they may have provided 40% affordable housing, and the policy was 50%. We changed the policy where we have some flexibility based on what's being built, and they may go, "Oh, we want to take advantage of that." Then that's where the negotiation starts. And other things we didn't talk about, as we said, you have to be in a crime-free multi-family housing program. You have to adhere to their requirements. So with Sarah now as part of the team, if you have somebody where you become a special limited partner, and all of a sudden you're having issues with their property and they're not taking the recommendations, we can go, "We're done."
Right.
It gives us some leverage points on some things that we don't have leverage on, that really benefits the resident.
So another answer to the question, how long does the arrangement last? Is while they remain in compliance with rules of the...
And as long as we're special limited partner.
Okay, so I think that we need to vote to approve the partnership policy, tax exemption partnership policy.
A little approval?
Second. So, okay, approval of the tax, the LHA tax exemption partnership policy was made by Commissioner Lawrence, sent by Commissioner Padilla Peralta. All of them in papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So that passes, you may go to the floor.
Tim, you might as well stay up here with us.
So have you all always had the, um, the facilitation fee or the administration fee of the $1,000? I think it's pretty cool to make sure that they, I don't know, that's not proper English, whatever. But I think it's pretty cool that you all are making sure that they align to our mission.
Yes.
That's very, very important. But, so what made you come up with the $1,000 facilitation fee? We just talked about these, but I just want to know.
We were researching other housing authority policies in the area, and most of them do have some sort of ongoing fee, just because it will take us some level of staff time, not a lot in most cases, but some level of staff time to make sure we're checking out all of their compliance pieces. So it's not, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We want, provide us like your CHAF audits, and we will make sure everything looks good. We're not going to audit you and do a heavy lift, but just trying to keep tabs.
Well, that's actually interesting. So this all kind of exploded in the Board of Commissioners meeting, in a good way. So people, they all, once here, started asking questions. And then we were literally sitting there going, "Okay, we're trying to monetize, uh, we're trying to get enough funds to, to create affordable housing." And I know we're putting a million dollars in annually in the general fund, but if there's a way for us to also bring funding in on this side, then it really maximizes the potential that we have to really further the broader goals of affordable housing in the community. And this is one of these classic examples where you're learning through. If you're just on the Housing Authority side, you don't see this. And if you're just on the city side, you don't see this. And this is kind of where you see us start blending these concepts together to really further a broad, a broader affordable housing strategy. That latter piece, you're not going to see in other communities, but I don't know that they've ever had anyone approach about it, probably because they already have this policy and most of the...
This was definitely, everything that you see in these, the, the changes that were made, we had... This was definitely, everything that you see in these, the, the changes that were made, we had two whole working sessions with the advisory board, bringing in Boulder County, Lauren Selley, which is Boulder County Housing Authority, just pouncing off ideas, running through care housing checks and making sure that everything makes sense. So this was actually, this has been in the works for about a while.
And a side note to this, Eugene and I were in a different meeting, has nothing to do with the housing authority, but has to deal with housing generally. And they threw out some concepts that we're really intrigued by because San Antonio is probably in the cutting edge on some of this. And so we're gonna take that and start diving into it because we think it may create some additional opportunities for more affordable housing and potentially even attainable housing, especially on the rental side because attainable rentals on this non-existent here. And, and so we're gonna be bringing some more concepts that we learn, we're learning through as we're doing different conversations.
That's mine, placing deep in successful. Um, so this is a report that we do every year. It's due at the end of February. It's a, um, CMAP stands for Section Eight Management Assessment Program. So, um, we gather up a lot of information for HUD and fill this out, document, um, how we came up with, with the answer. And then this is sent in and we're given a score. The last time we did this was in twenty nineteen. Because of COVID, it was, we had a waiver. So this is the first year that we were doing it since then. The, the score that we have, we give us a high performer. We have to get a ninety, ninety points or higher to get a high performer. So we hit that mark this year.
How many points?
We got a hundred and fifteen.
Wow, gracious.
Are we two percent shy of getting fifteen more?
I know, we're not gonna forget that. We're not gonna forget that. We're gonna be at ninety-five percent next year.
And that was the stuff. So we've never went into our reserves, we didn't into our reserves this year. So, um, we were, we were close to these, what they consider. We were at ninety-three percent.
And what about the utility allowance, Kevin?
So there's a couple of things that I, I noticed here. That should be a yes. Um, and then the check mark under fourteen B is not applicable and that was missing. So that would be correct if you want to solve. Is that what you want? Yeah, that's okay.
So do we have any questions? Seeing done.
Maybe, I, I'm impressed. This is great.
Do you know the history of what, what LHA had been for that before?
So in twenty nineteen, you know, the, the records that we found, we never had performance. I don't know if they were audited by HUD and that was adjusted, but, um, they're, they, I think they benefited from it.
So we, uh, need, uh, we need a motion to adopt a resolution twenty twenty three oh five.
I'm with resolution twenty twenty three oh five.
Okay, so this resolution twenty twenty three oh five to adopt a CMAP certification without Commissioner Lawrence, seconded by Commissioner Mark. Oh, Yago, I'm sorry.
There's so much time to gather, start signing the laws, you know?
Any discussion? Seeing done, let's vote. All those in favor of adopting this.
Aye.
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 All those votes. That passes unanimously. It's clear now on twenty twenty three oh six, signatory authority.
So I'll open this up and then I'm gonna ask for Tim's help. So with our, our new, um, extra special support from the CAL's office, we're doing a couple of cleanup items to make sure that we are on sound footing going forward. So there was a former motion back in twenty twenty, I believe, maybe twenty twenty one, about approving signatory authority for the executive, executive director. Tim, do you want to give a, a comment on why we're adding this one in today?
Yeah, we, this is a kind of a common resolution that has been passed in the past. Harold was given some authority, but under the title of executive board member, he's already an executive board member. So this is creating that title. He has that authority otherwise in the bylaws, but this is more clear, direct, creative authority. I'll split it as a, a delegation.
I do have a question. The contract was still within mutuals before you signed.
Yeah, well.
Nothing's really changed. I think that you have the authority.
Yeah, the purch- and anything that he's authorized or under like the purchasing policy, if he's authorized by, by this resolution, that it all matches up with the policies.
If it's not, I mean, you all have given us authorization under certain dollar limits. And so if it's in those, uh, if it's within that authorization, I just sign it. If it's exceeding the authorization, then we can bring that back to you.
Okay. But to know what the contracts are for. I mean, when, here's what I'm concerned about, just to know how, how it's being run, et cetera. If you have contracts out there for services, valid for development or construction, do we see those or do we just allow you to?
Uh, if it's within the dollar threshold, yeah.
We, we try to see what it is.
Right.
Okay. What was the dollar threshold?
Uh, we bring anything to you that's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Which, these days.
Most recently, you approved ahead of us signing our auditing contract at the end of the year. We brought that to you. And as we prepare, we got architecture agreements and construction agreements that are coming, that will come to you as well.
Okay, so seeing no more, anybody discussion, we cannot have a motion to the resolution twenty twenty three oh six. I think resolution twenty one oh six, seconded. So again, renewed by Commissioner Mark, seconded by Commissioner Pidongo, Paul, all those.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Harold, you decided.
Keep on signing.
Keep on signing.
Well, I'm like, yeah, I don't have to do check day all the time. I'll. Check day is not fun.
Sign fifty checks. Sometimes it's a chore.
So we're now at resolution twenty twenty three oh seven. We're at the inner of the record. See how.
Do you want to talk about why we needed this, Tim, or? This is related to.
Yeah, this is kind of your request. Uh, you were recently applying for a grant and they requested an explicit authorization. It requested a documentation of authorization to reply for the grant, which is fairly uncommon, um, in my experience. But this would make it a little easier to just give a resolution for the grant.
Yes, and this was a weird one where I think it was like, it was a big grant, so pretty limited. And most of these, when you're applying for it, don't require board authorization. And in this case, it did. And so we know we're building so many programs with the state right now and we're not ever sure what the requirement is. So we wanted to go ahead and have coverage. You all give me the ability to sign off on grant applications because they will all be connected to projects you're aware of. But it was just a weird nuance in there.
Did you ever notice Harold, the don't laugh and never carry any and hope they won authorization?
This is a slightly different issue. This is probably more similar to the issue we had on the city side where we, during flood recovery, when there was so much money coming out, but we, you all had to give me blanket authority to do that. This is more akin to that. This is a slightly different issue.
And if we are successful and receive grant funds, then you.
Then we have to bring it back.
So do we have any other discussion on this?
Second.
Resolution twenty twenty three oh seven, which is the director, executive director, CMAP, is being by Commissioner Pidongo, Paul. Secondly, by Commissioner Mark. Allison.
Aye.
Aye. Adoption of C policies.
So let me start this one. So if you all were, well, no, you all won't remember this. Those of you who weren't here, uh, when we originally started engaging in conversations with the housing authority uh, to enter into this relationship, we went through a period of time where we were trying to figure out, did we move everybody over? Did we not move everyone over? And we were kind of heading down the road of moving everyone over. Until we got to PARA. And so PARA is the retirement system that the housing authority was part of. Um, and as we started going through untangling the PARA equation, what we realized is that it would have been very expensive for us to move everyone over to become city employees because you would have to buy out of the PARA contract because you still have, still have retirees on the PARA system. So that was a piece there. And, and then in terms of their retirement system and evaluating that, you know, it's a twenty year, under PARA, it's twenty years, you can retire. And so we felt, well, because of the buyout cost and you keep everyone, we split it. So those positions that are included in the contract, so the accounting, uh, position Sarah's in, the working, we're all city employees. But housing authority members, so property managers, maintenance, Lisa, because Lisa was already in the PARA system, they're still housing authority employees under PARA. That's important because what comes out of it is they are not city and law and law employees. We then said they will follow all of the city and law and law policies. And so a couple of things started happening. When we, um, redid our on-call policy, it didn't make sense for the housing authority, but the direction was that are our policies. And I'll let them go over that in more detail. So that was a piece. Then, under workers' compensation, because they, we are, have insurance on workers' compensation, we've got, well, uh, we've talked about looking at SIRSA and others, but it operates in, in a manner that is completely different than the city's workers, workers' compensation policy. Which, when we start doing things like re-share and how much we pay under the city's workers' comp policy, the insurance provider for workers' comp on the housing authority side, the workers are like, no, we're not gonna do that. So we had to figure that piece out too. Um, and they cannot be part of the city's workers' comp policy because they are not city employees, which is built into that piece, which would create issues with our excess insurance carrier in terms of how it works. So as a result of that, I'll announce, now that I gave you a bit of the history, Molly can talk about what we're having.
Uh, so we'll be, uh, working with HR going forward to figure out what works best, um, to modify, to be able to make this all work together. So Lisa, do you want to give a little bit of background on the on-call, the conflict?
So when we went to come over, you, the city paid anybody who got called back or an on-call, two hours minimum. For us, sometimes we can have three, four calls. So we'd be paying all that each time and it was not in our budget, first of all. And then our nature of work is so different because most of our calls are ten minutes or less. It's a lockout, a clog toilet, something minor, flipping a breaker. So it did not align kind of budget-wise and time-wise to pay LHA employees under the city policy.
So, again, we, hey, we wanted to, like, you know that there's a deviation and the deviation, there's a very specific reason there's a deviation. Uh, we would like to build an on-call policy that we're probably gonna have two categories in that on-call policy. Uh, one piece is going to be for calls like lockouts, minor things that take X amount of time. And I think, what did we say this year today?
It's gonna be a one-hour period.
Instead of doing the two-hour period, we're gonna do a one-hour period. Most of the times on the city side, when we call people out, it, it's at least an hour and a half, two hours. And so the nature of the calls are distinctly different. Um, and then we may have a second, what did you, did we put the second one in there?
For. It's to include travel time as well. And then if they get called back while they're already on a call or within fifteen minutes, it kind of just adds to that call. And then.
Yeah, I think that's, so it's a one-hour minimum versus a two-hour minimum. We may, I know we talked to Beth about this. I don't think she put it in there. But we may consider, if you have a water leak or something more significant, it may be a two-hour minimum. Just because they don't know what they're gonna get into. And so that's business there. And then on the workers' comp side, or the workers' comp side, that's when.
We're gonna be reaching out to SIRSA and try and figure out if there's something that can be more suitable for LHA, however under the city, that may mesh better.
Can I ask the callback, why do we decide to increase it up to an hour? Is because it's a big disruption of life for these maintenance guys. I lived it for one weekend. I did on-call. I answered six calls in a weekend, did lockouts, did dishwashers, toilets, you name it. Um, but like, what really, ones that kind of made me see it was in the middle of the night when I got a lockout call for the suites at three o'clock in the morning. On a Monday morning, so I drove to the suites, unlocked the door, got home and it's like four o'clock in the morning. I'm like, I can't go back to bed. I gotta get up in an hour, you know? And you can't even like rest or anything. So I, very disruptive. So kind of gave us a lot of insight. And that happened like the week before the meeting.
So we had, when, when the, the first transition to the city policies, we did bring that to you for consideration. So we will do the same with these two, when we get the direction. We're gonna need to go on these for application.
We just wanted to be transparent. There is a difference. There are contractual limitations, other issues to deal with. It would let you be surprised. Can I get a heads up?
Heads up.
So you're not sure like the full cost differential or?
Um, no, and we have to figure it out. But, you know, we have, I had this conversation. We've got to figure it out. I mean, there's the right thing to do and there's using a monetary basis as a reason. And so we, we will figure that out.
Sure. I just wanted to understand why we are voting on it tonight.
Well, we're still learning through at least.
Doesn't have enough information yet. So we need a discussion. Seeing now you're gonna vote to interrupt, something you're interested in.
So I want to jump in first. Um, I didn't see the development update.
Uh, I think it's, we. It's included in the interim.
Yeah. So, uh, I want to start on development updates. And so we have been, as you know, looking at the property end of North Hope. And there's, so as you go through the development of these projects, uh, we're on the front end of design, but we're already starting to build the pro formas. And what you start seeing early on, we've already made two design changes. Um, and they're driven by financials. So if you will remember the first time that we talked to you all about this, um, the three bedrooms were on the edges like this and were in a townhome concept. What we started realizing in the cost of that townhome concept was blowing the pro forma um, out of the water and we couldn't really financially pull it together. So they gave us another option of stacked.
Stacked flats.
Stacked flats, which looks like, on the exterior side, a townhome concept. And, um, it still accomplishes the same objective on this, so if you can scroll down.
We'll get into coordinates.
Um, to the west of the lodge in Harst.
Yeah, yeah, just the street coordinates where.
Um, I don't.
So this is Cook, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Over, it's over here.
Yep, and that's.
Seventeenth is down here.
And that's eighteenth, the long building one.
That's Walden's.
Yeah, this is Walden's, alright. So where it starts getting even more interesting, as we're looking at the financials on this, if you can go to, because one of the things. Uh, we wanted to look at is the ability to bring, um, other services into this location. And so you'll see the blue here and the pink here. And what we were talking about is one or the other would be library flex space. And then the other one would be flex, or not flex space, library space, and the other would be early childhood space. Here's where the problems start coming in to this project. So this project is not in a qualified census tract. Which is a big deal, because if it were in a qualified census tract or a DDA, which is.
It's like a, it's a, it's like a URA, like an urban renewal area.
But not like the DDA and the downtown authorities. You can actually include those spaces into the basis of the project. So in this case, you can't include those into the basis, which means. That you have to bring your own funding into the project for those activities. So, in this case, um, beyond what the deficit is in the project. There would have to be an additional three million-ish dollars to come in to. Build the early childhood space and to build the library space. You can't build it in within the financing of this project. So we started trying to figure out, well, how do you bridge this gap? And, and you have to deal with the fact that all of this has to be done by the time you come in through the tax credit application. Which is a significant barrier to, to really try to wrap your hands around.
And that which is, that, that date is when?
So we'll get to that. So the earliest date is in August of this year. The other challenge that's starting to show itself is when you look at the project, if you go back to that other slide. Assuming that you don't have. Early childhood in the library in here, and you just built units out. Um, and you had flex space for the residents. There's a four-million-dollar gap in the financing of this. So, if you add those other components in, considering that it's not in a qualified census tract. That seven-million-dollar gap that you have to figure out. The four-million-dollar gap is really due to the fact that it's not in a qualified census tract as well, because the value of that. Is actually three to four million dollars. So if, if this were in a qualified census tract, we have no issues financially. So, you know, we're at the point of, you know, trying to figure out if we want a library annexed space in there. How do we come up with funds to do it, understanding how tight the budgets are on the city side. If you want early childhood, there are some brands that are out there. Whether or not they award them in time is another question that we're looking at. Um, and then we've got to really just break down this, this four-million-dollar deficit. Uh, before we're really even into deep, um, design, so. That's what we're working with. Um, the choices that we have are go ahead and move aggressively toward. Um, an August twenty twenty-three submittal into the Lytec round. But that almost means that we have to pull the early childhood and the library pieces completely out of it, because. Uh, we won't know where we sit financially, uh, we won't close until June, and we won't be ready.
If it's flex space instead, or is it gonna be units instead?
Will be both. It'll be units and flex space for the, for the building.
Okay, so the, it wouldn't be possible that later after the building is financed and built and leased and stuff. That the flex space could be turned into childcare or.
That's what we were hoping for.
That's what our idea was, and the way that you come in with the investors and everything that's in place. It's almost impossible to untangle that. And so, the other option that we talked about is splitting the project in two. Which February is the nine percent deadline, and so because if you split it in two. Then you, you have a small enough project that could qualify for the nine percent tax credits. Uh, the problem is there that is if you fill that gap, then you may not have enough to fill the other gap down the road. And then, you know, which one goes first? But for me, the biggest thing that concerns me is when you look at mobilization costs in a project that's large. I would think that you're probably adding anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars in mobilization cost, if you split it up in two. Um, the other option that just hit is we don't go for a twenty twenty-three tax credit submittal. Um, and we push it off until August of twenty twenty-four. That gives us some time to try to pull these other components together. But it kind of, we're starting to really weigh issues in terms of what's more important. Do we wanna try to get in? Because remember, it's also really possible, a lot of times on your first submittal, you don't get awarded. So you need a second, which may mean we're going in next year anyway, if we don't get awarded. But now we're trying to really figure out, and this is why I wanted to talk to you all about it, is. If housing's gonna be the key, if we drop some of these other components out of it. And just go forward with this housing project, which is a three-bedroom flat construction, and then a. Traditional multifamily environment with one and two bedrooms in it. What about what, eighty?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine units. Just know that you can't bring these other pieces along because of the way the financing. You know, limit your building.
So, question? Um, I, I. Because housing crisis, I think going ahead with, with the, you know, the, the plain, no frills. Solution is probably preferable, but I'm wondering again, grasping at straws here. You know, there's, there's stuff around, um, would there be an opportunity later to acquire. Another building and put childcare and librarianic there. That's nearby, across the street, across the market line.
Potentially, uh.
It just makes making the sacrifice, you say?
Yeah, there's, there's some land that's associated with the broader development just to the southwest. Um, behind, sort of, you know, diagonal, you know, they have that oil change location. Then you have the shop with Starbucks, there's a fairly large piece of land there. I don't know what the market, what the cost would be. Um. But what you're, I mean, yeah, so there, there would be the opportunity to do something like that.
So if I may add on, just kind of backing up to what our original goal was here, because obviously this is a housing authority property, it's, it's intended for housing. What our original goal was, is this, because there's so many boxes checked already on this site. It has some real things that are typically challenges, that won't necessarily be for this project. Like public improvements and zoning and things like that that are already set in place. Um, so this was really, if, if the city and LHA. Were going to try and stretch our legs using ARPA funds for our, you know, one-time opportunity. Um, and trying to really see what a city and LHA partnership organizationally could bring into a project to really serve residents. What would we do? We would stretch our legs and do everything we can to make, uh, to pull out the best of both organizations and put it here. And really make this, um, that, you know, the library and the early childhood care center. That would benefit these residents in a way that's not really out there, and it'd be really something unique and quite amazing. Knowing we went in with several wish lists, aspirational goals, exploring prefab housing. We've already determined that's really not a financial feasibility, so we've already acted that one. Um, then, we're talking about our library, early childcare, and trying to get larger units for families, since we know that that is. We're our largest waitlist, um, they just sit there for waiting and waiting. Um, so those were our, our huge goals, knowing that we probably weren't gonna get all of them. And so we're definitely at that point where we have to decide, and at this point. We're at the juncture where we decide to go all housing and still try and get our larger units, or basically take the time to try and do the, the combo. Um. So I think we don't yet know if we transition it to all housing, we don't know exactly how many units that would be yet. But, that's something that would be coming next. We're gonna have them run that model for us, so we can see the two side by side. But I just wanted to back into the history of what we were trying to do at this site, knowing we would have some reality checks, and we're basically there, just to give some context.
Miguel, would you consider this transformation, uh, housing?
We, we tried to get into that, and.
About four different ways.
Four, about four different ways, and we're told, yeah, this doesn't fit.
To the department. It's not a, uh, not a new to me, I was really fearing from, and you know all about it already. So it's probably one of three, and how do you get into the, uh, you have to call, you have to get into the membership on your membership.
That, that may be a different one, so there's one that's active now for transformational. Um, but we were basically told, eh, this doesn't fit. And we're probably gonna have all the others fit in the next two months.
So this was the Metro Mayor's, our coalition, Parkinson, Dull was there, DeOint was there, uh, one community group. A lot of information. Richie, they're in a sin, you know, slides and information. Mr. Wallace.
If we don't apply, if you, if we don't apply in August, you know, it's a nine percent, four percent, it's four percent. So that, that, this is a four percent project, or would we also consider it nine percent?
Um, if, if we did a nine percent, we'd have to break it into two projects.
So it's a four percent, August is the target. What's the next window or the next other day?
Next August.
So it's just, it's one, it's annual. Um, and this, this is such a reach that, you know, it is, it may not matter. It may be, it may be just kind of irrelevant, but depending on what you decide, or what we decide in terms of this application. You ought to at least be mindful that this early childhood proposal, and this council, I think is gonna get a presentation. Actually?
Yeah.
Matt Elton's gonna do a presentation on kind of where the alliance is, of its work. Um, and just so you know, you'll hear this next Tuesday, I'll just, just give you a preview. Uh, we've had meetings with camps, uh, county commissioners, both in Weld County and Boulder County. Not all the commissioners of Boulder County, two of the three, we met with all the commissioners in Weld. With a surprisingly receptive audience. It was a very far more productive conversation than I would have anticipated. And very receptive in Boulder, although it was just two of the three. Um, but the proposal is to put on the ballot, a ballot, uh, put on the ballot this year, a question about. Creating a, a special early childhood district. One question. Second question would be a mill levy that goes with that, that's the reason I. Just, you know, we've been talking about mill levies and what's, you know, included or what can be exempted. Um, and I will tell you that there, that the, that the number we're talking about in terms of bill levies, probably the, the smallest number is four mills. Now, I don't think you'd get that or none. The four mills generates forty-five plus million dollars annually for early childhood. Uh, and among the things that, that are laid out in the service one is the potential to support capital projects. Not that the special districts would be taking them on, that they would be funding capital projects of others. So depending on what we do here, if that were to succeed. I, we should be paying attention to that as an opportunity to fund projects like this, a partnership. Just, you know, it may not happen, but I, I hate to, if we don't go in August, I'd hate to miss the opportunity to take advantage of that.
Now, here's the interesting thing. So we could probably, other bases, get early childhood in here. But it can only serve the residents of the facility. Which, I think operationally is, I wouldn't do that because. You may end up with twenty spots and you can't fill, and you can't get.
Just saying, immediate way to go.
Now, that's the piece, if we wait a year, then opportunities like that, you know, the other opportunity is. Well, do we wanna add the one and a half million into the library number, the library cultural recreation tax? You know, but if we do all of those things, then you're, then you're missing housing out here. And that's really the question here is. Do we, do we wanna continue trying to hit this August, or do we wanna push to twenty twenty-four? And I think that's where we'd like to be.
I'm just saying, putting it back in your mind, if you decide to wait, there's some other things that might need to realize.
The other thing is, I mean, this is a classic example of, you know, you've heard me say this before, this is market rate and interest rate. Eating everything alive right now.
So are you hoping that interest rates might be down maybe here?
You know, I was kind of hoping that, until we got our report. So those members that are part of, uh, the city's retirement boards. We've all gotten, uh, we're going through our quarterly meetings and that. And so here's what's happening in the market. You know, what they're telling us is, I think everybody was projecting they'd trend down. But inflation's not moving as fast as they even want. And, you know, what they said in the, the meeting I was in is that it may be really in that resetting of interest rates. In what is truly normal, which is a six to ten percent range, which doesn't help. And the other scary thing is, um, when you were looking at inflation, it was starting to trend down. It kind of spiked, and the last, and the last job number. Um, came out and showed that there were not enough people for the jobs that were created. And in that meeting, they said for every one point eight jobs open, there's only one person to apply for it, which means you're point two down. Which also then tends to tell us that we're gonna continue seeing this. And, I just showed Eugene this earlier, Home Depot just announced that they're gonna add one billion dollars to. Would be capital B to their wage structure, uh, for the coming year. Which just is, everything's telling you, we're gonna continue to be in this fight. Which means construction prices and commodity prices are gonna continue moving, so. I, I think we, I don't think we're gonna see.
Me, that says we're gonna still have people who can't find a place to live. And so we should hurry. Even if it's not as cruel as we thought.
And we may hurry and still get to August and go, oh crap, we can't fill the gap, but, I mean, do you all want us to stay on track for August, knowing that? We can come back and tell you if the pro formas continue to get.
And, and that's what that depends on, are you to stay on track right now?
But do you want us to continue moving to August of this year? Generally, that we're gonna have to sacrifice some of those.
Who, uh, the other commissioners, I would say yes, keep, keep.
So there's other options, like, there's no other way that possibility that money would just come out of the sky and. You know what I'm saying? I just, I mean.
So we are putting in for our childhood. The Christina Valley, so obviously. So obviously, we think that's an April deadline and they're going to award pretty fast. So if we were to get that, we would come back and go, okay, we're going to put this back in.
The struggle is not getting too far along in design, but then we have to scrap and we go back as well. So that's some of our timing challenges that we have to think about.
When we design these, um, housing units or developments, I'm wondering if you should go backwards. Look at the grants that are available and then build it towards the grants almost. Like what would a, um, transformational unit look like or develop? And is there enough money to actually do that through those grants? I don't know, that might sound silly or unsense, but, but exactly, what, what do we need to do to get it?
And the hard part is you're chasing so many targets. So you're, you're chasing the tax credits because the tax credits are really the bulk, wouldn't you say Molly? And so you may go after transformational and get sideways on the tax credit side. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, yeah, so the, the main feedback we got from the transformational group was that that, they're really looking for those projects that aren't really white tech fundable. And so we are, and they won't, they don't want to, because of the competitiveness of it and how much they've received, they don't want to consider applications that are, don't already have a tax credit award.
That makes sense.
And this is my soapbox. That's, I think the challenge we face in this is that in order to really get affordable housing, you need tax credits in order to do it. But then they go, well, we want transformational, but not necessarily those that receive tax credits. And so now all of a sudden, you know, we started at transformational in that childcare library. But then all of a sudden, the way they designed these programs, it's like, well, we don't fit or we don't, and then it makes no sense in terms of how they're structuring some of these programs. And it, I don't know about Molly, it drives me crazy because you're like, you're not getting one.
It's a chicken and egg situation. Because the tax credits want you to have as much, for specifically, if we were going to do ACE and, and library, you have to go in with the funding in hand. But then for transformational, you don't want that. And same story with the QCT, so that's frustrating too, I feel like.
It would be so simple if you said, here's what we want to do and we're going to design it. So we want to go into tax credit and if we don't get it, we're just going to convert it to units. They don't let you sort of build those real time adjustments that frankly, on the market rate side, you could do.
These terms have to align everywhere.
So pursuing and going forward, um, can we have every commissioner just say what we want? What direction would we want to move to more?
Sure, I believe we should move forward, but also with the intention that, um, I know I'm a drainer, but believing that somehow we can get the funding for the childcare and, I mean, we still don't know what's going to happen with universal, with universal childcare. Exactly. Extra funding for that. Um, so that's a great possibility too. So I say move forward for the August of this year date with intentions. And I understand that we will have to dismantle and, you know, if we can't get the money, but I have faith, I believe in you all. Everybody knows this will make a happen, I believe it. And we're going to have the library and the childcare center, I just believe it. So anyway, I say move forward.
I wish I had my butt's favorite. There's a point, I guess, uh, there's a point where we're continuing to spend time and effort that you're going to look at potentially, retrospectively, go, that was a, we just wasted six months and we could have been pursuing other possibilities. There's a, there's a threshold there where if, if it's not, if we get, if maybe they weren't there now, right? We may be there right now, even as you anticipate August. I, I would hate to, there's just not enough time or enough people to go around on this and inspire them on YouTube. Uh, that, because you're going to, the opportunity costs are going to be pretty substantial.
We're, we're pretty close.
So, um, I, I would say if, if, if we're, I, I would say go, go for it. I wouldn't, as much as it would break my heart to not see the library and, uh, childcare facilities, however big or small, as part of this project. To limit it to residents would be, would be, would be a nonstarter. You have to have it more accessible. And I think Marcia's right, the cost of housing is such that, um, you, you, the longer we wait, the more it's going to. So I'd say go for it until you get to the point where it's like, this is a waste of time, right? Then I, I wouldn't watch you waste time because we said go for it when you know it's a dead end.
Yeah, no, we, I mean, we think there's a path forward on just, I mean, I don't know. I think there's a path forward on the housing. Just made it looking slightly different. But yeah, there's, there, there will be a point where we just go, the gap's too big, we can't do it. And we have to figure something else out.
The gap is, the gap's big regardless, so even filling that by August, we have to really.
Which is why the previous conversation where you gave us the ability to do some things. If we could do those things, then that may be the first one we got to fill there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I just. In my former life, the, the rule was always, don't elaborate too many features too early. You know, solve the simple problem, get the, the, uh, minimum viable product. Minimum viable product as soon as possible reduces human suffering along the most. So that's where I am. We can look at adding features some up time down the road, across the street, whatever. When would you know that, you know, how deep is your project when you say, you know, this isn't viable?
The library and the childcare?
Or just, yes, yeah.
Uh, depends on the grant.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, I mean.
And that's in April, okay.
Oh, I tell you.
But you would come back to us. You wouldn't wait, you know, you wouldn't be trying to make this happen and then come back in August. But you wouldn't come back to us early on and say this doesn't work like this.
If you want to say go forward today with the housing. And if you have to give them the childcare and the other stuff, then we would make those decisions real time. We would come back to you if we can't bridge a four million dollar gap.
The development partners, they would like us to choose a direction that is really, just for, they're spinning wheels too, you know, the word design we do.
Yeah, so no, I, I mean, I'd say move forward if there is, yeah, I are needing the housing. I don't want to go back. So I, I agree with you, we're going to cross it.
I'm going to say wait, wait, no, just kidding. Well, and this is those real time.
Wheels, we can whip you right out of here.
I appreciate your direction. This is real time. I mean, this started what, Wednesday last week is one of the first. And then we had a call this morning, which is like, we've got to ask you to postpone today.
So thank you for not taking it down the road, is what you're meaning.
Yeah, we can, so thank you. And then I think other development, Zinni is moving along?
Yeah, they're on track, they're closing in May. We're, there's a lot of moving pieces getting there, that's what you get.
The one thing I do want to tell you about that, that I think is getting lost in the conversation is, Zinni has permanent support in housing. And the mayor actually made me think about this the other day, and I think we don't do, um, we don't talk about it enough that, you know, permanent supportive housing is an option for the unhoused in our community because it is, you know, the percentage of people in the suites that we moved from being unhoused into.
Probably eight percent right now.
So, so when we talk about housing solutions for those that are unhoused, those fifty-five units are really tangible connection in our community. And, um, the chair, the mayor, asked me a question and I went, oh, we haven't talked about it this week. So we're going to do more about openly talking about that.
Yeah. In addition to just talking about the permanent supportive, and I talked about it, I don't know if I was supposed to, we're not going to have. And it's popular. But, um, there's things about the design, right? It's, it's what?
Trauma informed design.
Trauma informed design, thank you for the term. We should talk about that because the suites doesn't have a good reputation because it's not trauma informed, you see. And so it would be, it, it, it'd be great for everybody to know we're thinking about that.
Jump in because we actually just signed an MOU with University of Denver to do some research on trauma informed design at the suites.
Great.
So, and that's happened since I did these meetings.
You can make a change.
Remodeling changes or something.
It's little things that we're going to partner with them, they're going to come in and study residence management, um, the layouts and the spaces and be able to help us do stuff and then they're going to be able to take their research into broader projects.
Excellent. Get grant money out of it.
We are.
So we're, we're on update on operations. Who gets to do that?
We all get a little piece of the pie.
Yeah, so let's go to the age receivables first.
Oh, thanks, I'll buy, okay. Um, so you're going to see an increase from the last quarter report to this quarter report because of the meth units. And the, um, bio hazard unit, we do add those costs to build, to rebuild those units to the tenant. Those are going to collections. Um, so that's Aspenville Neighborhood, Fall River and the suites, the suites have two big units. That, that were almost close to a hundred thousand dollars. So, um.
There's no local collecting really, but.
Probably not, but if we don't get it on the ledger and show, you know, what we were finding is that wasn't happening. And then these people were coming back to us, we were housing them again and, and running into issues. So we need to make sure we document it. Um, so those were going, um, you know, we had forty-six past due tenants, it's more than a hundred thousand, um, dollars. In total, that is actually for past due tenants for our properties. So that's where we stand on the age receivables. The financials, um, are all submitted to the auditors for all of our property audits. Um, I kind of highlighted, you know, where we went over, almost every single property, we were over on vacancies. Based on what we budgeted and where we ended. The only one that was still in line was the person, but all other properties we were over, we did vacancies. Um, and when we, when we don't have the money coming in for those vacancies, we're also losing, um, vacancies from those properties as well.
And so the change condition on that, if you remember, when we went over the budget this time, Kinder went in and did all the analysis. That was to, to ensure this didn't happen to the rest of our ability.
Yeah, and I think we're going to start also tracking those units closer, um, to, to see where they're at and what, what's actually happening. You know, is it appliances, is it the waitlist? Is it, you know, where, where are our struggles with these units not getting, um, occupied? Yeah. So we're going to start tracking that more too. And I can bring that on a quarterly, you'll probably bring that on a quarterly basis?
Yeah.
Okay. So there were a couple properties that had utilities that were over. Um, a lot of that was probably related to the gas prices going up. And we're going to notice that this next year too, because I don't think we've definitely increased the budget. Um, and we're, well, really, with large increases in January. So, um, that's definitely going to start increasing maintenance expenses. And there, those are over, that was usually related to snow removal. We had twenty plus snow events, which, um, we're kind of reevaluating and maybe possibly getting our own trucks, um, in-house. That we might be able to actually build back to the properties and have a better perform on the property level and also room rent.
And would let us cover the gas bill and some of the other things. And then January is not off to a good start either. I think we, and so I did talk to Jim, and so you know how this works, so I'm now on both sides of the equation. Uh, we, we met with Cash and Jim. Feel there's ways for us to get at least one, not two trucks. And one of the little, I call it snow carts that, that you can drive around and get. And with the trucks and the other piece, you know, let it work a deal where we can pay that back over time. So we don't have to fully front the capital this year. And we think that hopefully we can get that, that road to be fast so that we can start relieving some of the pressure on the, on what's their charges or stuff. But we've got to get that ongoing payback accomplished so that it doesn't create another financial issue.
Yeah, we spent over two hundred thousand dollars concerning the, the two of our properties.
Can we not borrow one of the public sector new electric subs? I'm being a scientist.
Actually, there's like an F two fifty that's about to come off. And another one that instead of auctioning, one of them, instead of auctioning, we're going to try to transfer another one. We're going to try to buy out early as we're transitioning this, some of those trucks in, so that we can start doing it ourselves. So what, you weren't far off in terms of what we're doing.
Just to clarify, so we, we've got forty-six residents that on average are ten thousand, two hundred dollars in arrears.
Yes.
And I, I'm sure that varies. Are we have a, do we have a workout plan with each of those?
So that is, so what's happening with that is the property managers start. So when, when they're, they're evicted, a lot of them is usually due to evictions. So it could be lawyer costs or court costs, um, that get transferred. They try to reach out and a lot of the times they're getting the mail back. And so they do that for ninety days and then they'll start sending it to collections. We'll, we'll analyze it after they've done those, those ninety day letters and say, is it worth going to collections? Where do we think this person is? If not, we'll write it off, otherwise we're going to try to send it to collections.
Is there a point, where does that trigger? I mean, by, by the time somebody gets this far behind?
Well, I think, I think you would have to probably speak to that, like, at what point does, is notice happening to these tenants? You know what I'm saying? So if it isn't, if they are in arrears on rent.
If it's rent, they're getting notices by the tenth of the month, then hey, you haven't paid rent. And then that's turning over, you know, to court. Sometimes we have to serve a second ten day the following month because courts are closed. The attorney couldn't get to us because we had higher priority cases. So they're getting noticed if it's for rent, two days after rent's late. If it's meth units, stuff like that, that we don't have to accumulate the cost to after move out, they start getting their thirty day notice, the sixty day notice, the ninety day notice. And we're trying to track them down, but most of the time those contacts are no longer good.
Yeah, so that, I, it, it's catching their money before they move out that's useful.
And it's, we have been able to sign some payment arrangements in court. So I did get one payment arrangement on the court docket. Um, they were behind, um, rents of about ten thousand dollars during the whole COVID thing. And so the judge made them sign a payment plan in the courtroom.
But part of this is, when you look at some of these folks from over COVID, they didn't have, you could bill on evictions and not payment and things like that. So I'm sure that's some of those. I'm not hearing that any, that they're allowing to accrue significant balances. And I think a big part is that.
Well, that and the, the extra money is running out. So the money that they might have been getting from other agencies during the COVID time period is running out. So those prepayments that they may have received, one thousand thousands of dollars to take care of a few months of rent, those prepayments are starting to run out.
They were having funded for money instead of paying.
I don't want to say that, but we got, a lot of people who got the ERAC money, who got back rent, also got anywhere from three to six months of future rent. So they were, were working and, yeah, and then that money's ran out, so.
And also that's not figured about HUD diligence, you know? It's a, a long process that you have to go through in the court system to make sure that, that the housing authority, did they part in providing, uh, due diligence for the tenants? And so that takes a long time and.
A mountain.
During that time, those notices and like you said, trying to catch up with them too, is, takes a while.
So the four hundred and fifty thousand, how much of it is in that?
Um, I don't have that in my head, but a, a good chunk of it. I mean, you probably got, you know, the majority of the suites about two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy thousand probably. Between court costs and, and meth and, and the biohazard unit as well.
That was about six thousand for that, the biohazard, yeah.
So, I mean, a lot of that money is those tenants. So mostly ones that are probably over in, in rent or they may have left and the unit was a mess. It's probably in there for twenty-five, three thousand dollars. Plus, plus if you say three months rent, you know, by the time you get them to court and get, and get them out, which takes, um, a considerable number, you know, number of months to process.
Sure, right now, even after we get the eviction granted, I tried to schedule two evictions today and they're not till the end of March. So we gotta just hold on for another forty days.
Can you garnish her?
Not, not, for security and stuff like that.
We are turning, on the HCV side, we are turning, we turn our career four over to law enforcement.
For fraud, yes.
For fraud.
And then if they, all under the, um, the housing vouchers, if it's project based or, or voucher, we report it to EIB. And so if they try to get assistance someplace else, that comes up. And, and it's fucked. They can't, they can't get assistance someplace else, so.
So the last is the voucher account. Um, so currently, as of February first, we were at four hundred and ten vouchers. We had an additional twenty-one that, um, actually twenty-five, that were on, in stages of either getting, um, their briefings done, getting their vouchers issued and then looking for housing. So we have four hundred and thirty-five total vouchers and all those were to lease up. Um, we also have ported vouchers of eleven. We have decided to include those vouchers into our program mainly because we were hoping to always get to four hundred and twenty and we were never able to reach four hundred and twenty. And we have more money coming in. So there was, um, an act that was providing, you know, money to the housing authorities. Um, due to inflation and everything like that, we're looking probably at a seven-point-five percent increase. Um, so HUD is asking us to start looking at our two-year tour now and see where we need to go. You know, so we're gonna take a look at that and see if we can add more, but we wanted to make sure those porters aren't, aren't given. And unfortunately, we've exhausted waitlists and we just never could reach that four hundred.
Now, getting them all leased up at one time, they have sixty days. Um, and then making, we give another thirty days and then another thirty days. So you're talking, you know, four months before they, they get leased up. So by the time you, you get people moving off, trying to get them leased up. Um, so I think that if, we, we have a total of eleven, so that brings us up to four twenty-one. Um, and we still have twenty-one people looking, so I think we're on a good track of just keeping a lot of people out there looking right now.
So there's something I'm gonna, I'm gonna relate to a previous conversation in terms of what we talked about on the tax exemption and, and giving us the first call for our voucher holders. The preference is kinda hard, but. One of the dynamics that's in play is we've talked about how it's hard for people to, our voucher holders to find locations to, um, get housing.
With, with the voucher.
Yeah, it's hard. The interesting thing that we started actually actively talking about, and I'm, I'm gonna try to get some more information on this. One of the things that we know is that there's an agreement that the Longmont Housing Authority had with Boulder Housing Partners and the Boulder County Housing Authority, that if their voucher holders come into Longmont, we don't have the automatic porting piece. And so they still manage the vouchers, which, um, I think we're seeing a press because Longmont's the most affordable community of Boulder County. And if a number of their voucher holders are getting them in other locations and coming and getting units here, that's pressing our voucher holders. And then they're not pouring over, which is money coming in a lot of the way over. And I think, I get the agreement and I understand it, but the job you all want me to do is look after the financial interest of this organization. And I think we're gonna have to dig into this conversation a little bit and probably engage in a real conversation with those other groups just because I think there's a local impact. And they probably don't necessarily agree with this, but I'm trying to figure out how we really get the financial solvency of this organization to a different level. Don't know what that means, just know that I'm gonna start working on it and trying to figure it out and understand what the loss is and how we can try to figure out how we can get some more revenue coming in. It may turn into an interesting conversation.
And that would be with Boulder, with Boulder County and with.
Boulder Housing Partners, yeah.
And the same applies to us, because we have some that go to Boulder.
We offer it, James, and so we've got, we've got a lot of our clients that are outside of the suite.
So I'm gonna wanna see how many go outside, how many come in and start really doing a data analysis on it to go, are we on the positive or are we in the negative? And if we're in the negative, then maybe there's a conversation. If we're in the positive, we may go. But I want you to know what we're gonna start working on because we don't know what it's gonna look like, but maybe we'll kind of.
We, Boulder County and Boulder Housing Authority and Longmont. We also formed a landlord assurance fund. So we're hoping that with this landlord assurance fund, if a voucher person moves out and there's, there's damages that they have up to five thousand dollars, that they can put in a claim to cover some of those damages that the insurance doesn't cover. Um, and there's, there's requirements under that. But we're trying to make this more, um, appealable to more, more landlords. So that's one of the ways that, that we're trying to do that. So was that?
Yes, that's me.
Given that. So, um, we, yeah, the occupancy report, the voucher report, um, property updates?
Um, so for the occupancy and the property updates, make it brief. Um, we're holding at ninety-three percent occupied. We do have a whole bunch of, not a whole bunch, but a lot of movements scheduled for, um, later in the month in February, pending weather. Uh, we, we found that trying to lease units this time of year is very hard, especially with seniors. Nobody wants to move. They're saying, oh, in the spring, in the spring when it's warmer, I don't wanna move right now. So it's adding to the vacancy, but we, um, we have Fall River, Aspen Senior and Village Place waitlist open. And so we're getting a lot of, um, agencies who are helping people apply. And so that's getting them on the waitlist and they wanna move immediately. So we got people from Hope and the Senior Center who are really helping push, um, people to apply who are looking for immediate housing. So that's our, and we have two coming into Fall River this month. We've had quite a few at the suites, so that will help out for next month's numbers. Um, the down units, just a quick update on that, the suites, we still have quite a few down. Um, seven-three-one-two, which was, um, one of our meth units, it was involved in a flood last week. So that one, um, and the two units below it are now part of a flood claim. One was just, seven-one-one-four was vacant for two hundred and seventy days. The guy moved in and on the same night flooded. Um, so we're working through that. Um, Aspen Senior, they've had a meth down, unit down for two hundred and ninety days. Um, it's scheduled to be completed at the end of this month. And, um, Aspen Neighborhood, we have, um, a meth unit there. Um, we're trying to work out a plan to figure out how to get that one back online because insurance will not cover that one as we already exceeded our claim limits for that year. Uh, for property updates, um, activities that are starting up again, these residents are having a blast. Let me just say they have four properties, have Irish dancers coming in for March. I just got requests for, um, the birthday parties are all back in swing at all the properties. Coffee conversations are starting back up this month with the residents. And we've been able to fill most of our vacancies for staff. So the suites, we hired one building attendant that's doing the weeknights. We have two more starting next week that will cover the weekends and that's taking the place of security. So we will have almost around the clock, somebody at the suites, walking the halls, cleaning the property, helping with maintenance. Um, it's, it's been huge there. Spring Creek Fall River, we had a management vacancy. Um, Gregory started last week. Residents are loving him, so off to a great start this year.
But, I mean, I see the cost of insurance for some policies. Issues?
It went up.
It went up generally though, too, not just.
Yeah, so there were, there were several, um, factors in the insurance. One is that we were finding that they weren't insuring, they weren't increasing the insurance rates every year. So if we did have a total loss, we wouldn't be able to rebuild. Um, so we are gradually getting some of those properties up to that level. And when you do that, your insurance is gonna increase, um, along with percent of loss ratio. So depending on how much is in that bucket, if they diminish that, which is like what happened with the Lodge and Heartstone when we had that fire, um, they're almost like ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars more insurance rise because we wiped out, um, the, the money that we had been paying, um, that got wiped out for that loss. And I imagine next year, with all the meth units and the biohazard, I mean, the suites is actually already at three thousand dollars. Um, and that's because, there's, there's two things happening there. One is, is all of a sudden it's going on at the suites, but they also require our detectors to be at twenty-five thousand dollars for wind inhalants, um, which you have to do a buyback policy for that, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars. Just, yeah.
So with the meth detectors, would that, um, add to, you know, like when you get, uh, certain things in your house for insurance? The insurance either goes down or, would the meth detectors help at all with the insurance?
Well, I think it's gonna be a, you know, as we talked, it's kinda gonna be like as you start to add them or as you start to do the testing, you know, what, you know, we haven't done the testing on some of these units that we don't know what it's gonna test at. Um, we do have a clause in our insurance policy that is, there's a hundred thousand dollar gap per year for, um, loss due to smoke or meth or product, I guess it's, any type of product.
So we've, you've hit that. So the unit where we have the two significant claims, we, we're out of insurance. So when leases are, we're trying to figure out how we do it. We, we haven't made it, literally, we, we're talking about, well, I know we have master electricians here. We have folks here almost taking the VCP model to have a city build day to where we can help facilitate this, you know, so I can make drywall, I can do flooring. Literally on some of these, cause if you were to just contract that out. You, you really could, you could.
It's a habitat model.
It's a habitat model for some of this. And so you get two significant claims of property and you're, you're just.
And I imagine we'll be there with the suites too. This was the best one that was aiming, and they don't have much of a reserve. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna hit the suites here soon, so.
So we think that it's, it's too early to tell, the insurance companies aren't adjusting to, I mean, aren't the meth detectors are, they're not even in the US yet. Um, and so it's, we've had conversations with them, trying to say, is it a definitive measure? Even if there's a spike, it should go down over time, but is it an underwriting thing? They're just not used, they haven't faced this yet.
Yeah, I'd like to get it with their actuators.
So is there anything else?
So this is Sarah's first public health and safety update.
Yes, so I was blessed with two big projects, cameras on all properties. Finding, um, we already have three bids for cameras, but we need to determine where we want them and externally, internally, all of that good stuff, so, um, moving, that's moving pretty fast. And it, it looks like due to some of the things that we've seen with the NOLA cameras, that that's probably gonna be our best bet. The other, the other bids aren't off the table, but, um, just looking at, at the quality and what we'll get with the NOLA cameras, um, I, I think you will see the, the big difference in the volume. So, um, I should have that wrapped up at the end of next week as far as locations and needs. And I'll bring that back to this group and hold it forward. Meth detectors, we are in the middle of that too. We are basically trying to determine if, um, their system is compliant with ours. So without getting into the weeds of a lot of things that I'm learning, um, we have to make sure it's, uh, E-911 compliant and SIM cards. Um, we have this company out in New Zealand is sending us their device. So we are going to test the SIM card, uh, when we get it. And thank goodness for Valorous Tax Group and Valerie Dodd's group for holding your hand a little bit. So that is moving pretty quick too. And at this point, we're having weekly meetings with, uh, the representative from New Zealand. They do have these devices in a, in a housing development endeavor somewhere. We're trying to, to, we're trying to get that information, um, because they have some policies and things that we'd like to see that they've already, you know, wired right into the wheel. If we can review some things and, and talk to them about what's worked, what hasn't worked, um, et cetera. So that's moving forward pretty fast.
So real quick, the issue is the SIM card. An issue is it doesn't work with the LTE network we're building. But they've agreed to put it into development for next year so that going forward, they will have an option for the privately owned LTE networks. And it won't be an issue, but it's a ongoing cost issue if they don't do it. And so that's what Sarah's been dealing with.
And that cost would be a lot. Like, outing one per the numbers out there. So, um, it is a work in progress for sure. I, I talked to Lisa and Harold and Molly about setting up a time for basically for me to attend all the coffee conversations and not just, I wouldn't be the guest speaker all the time, but just when questions come up for residents regarding public health, safety, any, any issues like that, I would, I would be there. Um, we're going to start with the suites, beginning in March, doing that. On my plate is also reviewing Xenia and Christman two as far as SEC Fed recommendations. And I, I do that with planning and development currently with a multifamily build. So we, we provide the recommendations and the, you know, it's not, it's not anything we have teeth in. So they either, they either take our recommendations or they don't. We've seen it, I, I've seen much success in the last maybe five to six years with our, um, multifamily builds with them taking our recommendations, so, um, that, that's a very good point. And last but not least, um, our calls for service remain relatively low for all LHA properties. I plan on talking to the staff here about how we want to bring that information forward to you as far as maybe a quarterly update on, on calls for service a little bit more detailed. So working on that too.
Any discussion for Sarah?
You shouldn't recommend Sarah with that. You look bad.
It's a lot.
You look like a civilian tonight.
Well, and then we'll say, bringing Sarah on doing this, let's just shift and move people. And we had a tenant issue that, um, was wearing Lisa out. And if us bring Sarah into the tenant issue, Commissioner Waters had experience with this tenant from his, one of his on the board, but it just shifts the nature of the conversation and how you can do it. And so it's given us capacity to deal with issues at a different level and frankly, give people some breaks because, um, that is something. and frankly, give people some breaks because, um, that is something I'm starting to really watch just generally about staff is, we had this conversation about, in a separate meeting, there are, and you'll hear me talk about this in the retreat, but we're seeing uniformly, uh, the people, um, not, people are concerned about their mental health, they're concerned about their work-life balance and what they're having to deal with. And so we're gonna start really taking a more active role with the entire LHA staff in terms of working on, you know, bringing people in that can tell people, how do you, you know, how do you build your own mental health, how do you deal with issues, who do you talk to? How do you utilize peer support? Because if you saw the issues they deal with on a daily basis, um, it's significant. And, and I would honestly say, some of the issues they've dealt with is not that different than probably what Sarah's seen in the capacity of a law enforcement officer, which you're almost expecting at the merit of, so there's another operational component that we're starting to really, we talked about digitalism. They do great work, pretty team.
We need an in-house therapist. Don't we all?
I, I do have to, to support what Harold is saying. You wouldn't think that people running, um, properties, rental properties, would have so much access to traumatic incidents and things that can give you PTSD. And it is, it's intense.
Yeah, we don't believe that.
Well, that's part of it. So Sarah knows now, there are certain things that it's probably primarily the two of us dealing with with Lisa. You know, I've had to have conversations with each one of them. Are you prepared to see this? Are you okay with seeing this? Because if they're not, then that's where we have to start starting in and support each other. And imagine what this is. It's a, we've learned a lot. So they're great, they're fabulous, they're doing an awesome job. And I think you're starting to see where we're starting to get, we're starting to run. Um, and, uh, sometimes you need to keep them from springing, because that don't give everybody more help.
Yeah.
They're doing really well.
It's helped you a fair way.
So we're, Commissioner Collins? Do we have issues with the, uh, Commissioner Collins?
I have a commissioner question. Um, we've got this other project out by Costco that for technical reasons, I have a special interest in. When is that gonna come to us for a project this way?
Uh, we're still waiting on the planning and engineering design to come back to us. Uh, we came back, they sent it back, I have a couple of questions. Hoping it's in the near future, it better be, because we have applications out for grant funds. But, um, I would expect it in a couple of weeks. Uh, they got it back, but they have to deal with some technical questions, so.
So it's close?
For the first one, I, yeah, it's close.
Well, it looks like you are ready to have an emotional picture.
Someone?
Hi, hi. Commissioner Collins, something about the. I wasn't thinking of the German.